Mr. Chris Gignan?
Steve.
We can't jump there today.
What is it?
He said he didn't say it. They're gonna say point here, right?
Cedar, four block Cedar.
Yeah, he didn't say, oh, I wanted to make that up.
Yeah, you know what we can fill up with?
Hat? Yes.
No, hand.
No.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the township board of commissioners meeting. November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, the annual budget meeting to the flag.
Budget meeting to the flag in the United States of America. In the Republic of Georgia stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Hey, let's call this meeting the lawyer with the roll call.
Mr. Saraceni, here. Mr. Donahue. Mrs. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. McManaman.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. McCray.
Here.
Mr. Weller.
Here.
Ms. Malzaka.
Here.
Mr. Dolly.
Here.
Well, close down.
Thank you. Hey, we have the public forum. We got, uh, Arthur.
Yes.
Whitefowl, come on up. Must be at time of year.
It is.
How did I guess?
Arthur Whitefowl, I'm Executive Director of Senior Community Services, sponsor of Squaw Senior Center. Very pleased to be based right here in Ridleytown, Fossum. And yes, I'm here for that time of year. But also, I wanted to introduce our new center director, who just, today's her third day on the job, Jessica Hadfield, and she, I dragged her along today.
Oh, my, 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 thank you.
And she's a local Redley girl, as I say.
Why not? Congratulations. You got big shoes to fill.
They don't like it.
Yeah, well, Kimmy Gaddy was our director for twenty-five years. They retire. Jessica comes with from the private sector, has fifteen years of management, which is very valuable. Managing the senior center is a, is a big job and has wonderful customer care skills. And we're just thrilled that the stars aligned and she's here to fill this important vacancy.
That's great.
Sorry, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's always been run extremely well, and we're so happy that you aren't based in Ridley. We've told you that every year when you pull up and head us for money.
If we were like in Ridley Park.
Right, turn the camera.
So, let me, I think this is, I want to, this is a copy of our solicitation. I just provide some good background. Our, our request, first of all, let me just say, we want to formally say thank you to the township board's support over four decades of unwavering support, not only the financial contribution, which obviously is important, but also the other forms of support that we, the township provides. We have two members of, one of our board directors from the township, Mr. Pat McMenamin and Ms. Blaise Capone. I work serves on our finance committee, Blaise on our property committee, helping us to get the word out through the website, newsletter, referring clients. It takes many, many forms. And we, we appreciate it. Our, our request is, we're keeping our pledge that we have made over many years not to ask for an increase. So our request remains the same as it has been. And the money that we receive from Ridley as well as our other municipalities is not only important for services advice, but also as a, as a symbol of support. And we go, we raise over eight hundred thousand dollars a year from, from individuals and foundations. In, in the first paragraph of any solicitation, we talk about the support we get from our municipalities. So we thank you for that as well. This has been a rough year. You know, it's not a very normal year. Are, we are on the road to, to return to normal. Our in-home services, I might add, did not stop. We served almost a hundred relieved township residents through in-home services with personal care, home-delivered meals, house, what we call home support, housekeeping. And in fact, we delivered about twenty-five thousand meals at Squaw Center in, in the greater Ridley area. And we, ordinarily, we have about, I'd say maybe three to four hundred Ridley residents participating. About twenty-five percent of the people who come to Squaw Center from Ridley, although we have people coming by camera among about an hour, got over forty different municipalities, which attracts a very broad audience. But as you would expect, you know, given we're based in Ridley, Ridley's a large township, a majority, many people, the largest municipality is, frankly. So again, we thank you for your support. We're, in January, we're bringing back our in-home, our congreed meal program instead of dining. The type of travel program is returning, so we feel good. We're, it's starting to feel like normal again.
Wow, good. We can't understate or overstate now, great job that you do in, in the whole center. It's amazing how many people you serve and help. Pat tries to take credit for that because he's on the board, but without you, and then you've been doing it for, how many years have you been doing this?
A little over forty.
Forty years.
I saw we've been over forty.
But you do a great job.
I know I don't look. I aged well.
That's right. But you do a great job, and we're happy to support it as always.
Thank you.
If you need anything else, we're always, we're always here for you, services or whatever you need. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, David.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we'll put this on next month's agenda. All right, we'll put your next month's agenda to improve if we can't add it to it. There, wait one more. Okay. I'm Jada Deorio.
Hi, Jada Deorio, four twenty-six Ridley Avenue in Fossum. And I got, someone called me before I left the house and asked me to ask this question. The Marine Training Center on four twenty, do, do we know what's happening with the prop, with the property?
We, we have been looking into it, trying to see what, what's happening there, so.
Right, we reached out, made contact with the Marine Corps and waiting for a call back from their, I guess it's their real estate people to see exactly what they're gonna do with it. Haven't gotten an answer yet, though.
Is the property owned by the government or is it owned by the township?
No, it's not our property.
It's not our property. So if the government makes a decision or whatever, do they have to run it by the township, whatever they decide to, to do here?
Well, they have to because of our zoning laws against anybody else, whatever that is zone for, but we're trying to contact the authorities there, try to, you know, do work out a deal to get it for the township, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Our calls to try to obtain it from the township.
Awesome, okay. And on a personal note.
For nothing, oh, forty.
Right, exactly. But on a personal note, I would like to thank the residents in, in Ridley that voted in the last election, especially the ones in Ward Eight. It didn't go quite the way I would have liked it, but Shannon, we've become friends and as I said to her, you know, I'm gonna stay involved and I'll do anything to help out and to, you know, for the township, because that's why we're all here.
That's why we're all, and that's what I tend to say, and that's why we're all here. You guys will be, do a good job.
Thanks, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Okay, saying anybody else for public forum?
Okay, the manager's recorder, Sir Ryan.
The commissioners will hold the following budget meetings here in Garland Hall. Monday, November twenty-second at six P M. to present and consider adoption of the two thousand twenty-two tentative budget. Monday, December twentieth at six P M. to review the two thousand twenty-two final budget. And then on Monday, December twenty-seventh at six P M. to consider adoption of the two thousand twenty-two final budget. The commissioners will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December ninth at six fifteen to discuss the township's community development block grant, known as C D B G, application for program year two thousand twenty-two. Also, just a reminder for everyone that the December commissioners' meeting will be held on Wednesday, December fifteenth, one week earlier than usual due to the Christmas holidays. We also have a resolution tonight acknowledging November twenty-seventh as Small Business Saturday. We're encouraging all our residents to get out and support all the small businesses here in Ridley Township. Not only on Small Business Saturday, but throughout the year.
We are, we have the resolution, right?
Yes. So I'll read the resolution. It says, whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Ridley celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas eighty-eight percent of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic, and ninety-two percent of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas ninety percent, ninety-seven percent of small business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact that they can make by shopping small. And also eighty-five percent of them also encourage friends and family to do the same. Whereas fifty-six percent of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in two thousand twenty. And more than fifty percent of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed the local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of the social media recommendation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Ridley supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. Now therefore being resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Ridley does hereby proclaim November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Do you have a motion due, Doc?
I'll, I'll make a motion to a document.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. President, yeah, I wanted to say something. Just to let everyone know, the follow-up on the Small Business Resolution is that on the website, we have a directory of all the businesses in Ridley. That if you don't know who's around, you could go to our website, go right into, into the directory and then you can look up, you know, the different businesses also have their website and their hours and everything like that. So that's a great way of finding out who's in the area that they can support, so. And we're looking to build that, start ramping that up again because of, out of, hopefully out of COVID.
Right.
Start ramping that up again and getting up stronger in two thousand twenty-two.
Remember, right before COVID, we had a meeting with all businesses, waving them up.
Yep.
And got some ideas on how to help promote them, how to promote business. But this resolution in the Small Business Saturday is always a good start. I encourage everyone to get out, spend your money locally, spend it on anybody on the cable or help these, help the small business owners out. They've come through a tough time and, you know, they can need our help. Thank you.
That's it, then, I report.
Couple notices I have here. In accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, the Board of Commissioners met on an executive session on November ninth. The purpose of the meeting session was to discuss a litigation matter. We also be getting a couple phone calls about notices taped to people's front doors regarding delinquent taxes. This notice is from the county, not the township. We do not, we do not take notices onto people's doors. If you receive a notice in this matter, contact the Delaware County Tax Claim Bureau at the phone number listed on the, on the notice. Okay, recycling report.
Yes, Mr. President. Trash collected in October was one thousand two hundred and three point forty-seven tons. Recycling collected in October was one hundred sixty-three point fifty-three tons. We collected twelve TVs and monitors in October through our television monitor recycling program, bringing total net to one hundred seventy since April.
Again, we've got to push the recycling. Now the recyclables are off, correct? We're getting, we're getting paid more money now for recycling, so, you know, please, every Wednesday, put out the recyclables all in one thing. Okay, you know, it keeps it out of the trash, I'm paying more for the trash. Just hope so, for township and the environment. Controllers, reporters, press reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a motion that I need to open a new bank account. The purpose of the bank account is to administer the funds from the American Rescue Plan Grant received by the township.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Source is reported, Mr. Neil. Mr. Neil, report, Mr. Goodnight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend approval of the five certificates. Video communication service, the two thousand twenty-one police radiobeam contract, three thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. A T U Services Incorporated, the two thousand twenty-one storm and sanitary sewer repair contract, six thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. And Abidensio Contractors, the Penn West Storm improvements, one hundred nine thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and eighty-six cents. And Abidensio Contractors for the two thousand twenty-one road program, three hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty cents. Traffic planning and design for the Keger and Franklin Avenue traffic signal improvements, one thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars. And traffic planning and design for Midday Boulevard traffic improvements, one thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents.
Was that the, um, the suite? Not much of a difference.
That's, that's, that is the difference. That's the coordination with Penn Dot.
Oh, for that whole thing.
Probably they have for the Blue Route.
Just did a, from, it's that, it's gonna be next month, meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna address it, man.
Right, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the certificates.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The tabulation of bids, the not field development, we had opened these bids last month. This is partially funded by a grant that we received from the state. There was two contracts, contract A for fencing and contract B for site improvements. We held a teleconference with the state, the grant administrator, and it seems best that, both these projects, bids are still over budget, so it seems best that we reject both of these bids, re-advertise hopefully in the next month or so, and get better results. So I'm gonna make a recommendation, reject both of those bids for contract A, fencing and contract B, site improvements.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have the Penn West Storm Improvement Project Update. This is the project that's about nineteen projects on the town, on the town's list. Two more projects were completed in the last month. Apparently they're working on Morris Avenue, and then the project coming up next is Darby Road, and that's a fairly large project, that'll take probably a month and a half for that to finish. The two thousand twenty-one road program project update, that project is substantially complete. They're coming back around now, doing cleanup from the punch list of anything that was deficient during that project. And then finally have Delco Greenways Grant Application Status. The town should apply to the county Greenways Grant for Phase Two. And this was for not field improvements. We asked for two hundred fifty thousand dollars and we were denied. So it's one of the other reasons why we had to reject those bits, the funding that we expected didn't come in.
So they, they say all or nothing, or did they, did they say, give you a hundred and two fifty or not?
They just, they just kind of let our base tell us we didn't make the cut, and thanks.
Charles, for the Penn West Stormwater, I just want to, I guess, I'll, have you talked to that contractor about that issue for the resident in the one alley? Has that been resolved?
I received the information from the resident.
Okay.
Forward it to the contractor, and we'll have to file it to make sure it resolves. But I haven't heard anything, so I'm, my assumption is that it has been.
And I haven't heard anything from the resident either, but I just want to make sure that we're, from our end.
I will, I will verify.
The other thing too is I just want to thank Charles and the contractor especially. There was a couple issues that came up and arose in our section concerning that job. And they were addressed fairly quickly over like a two-day span. And then they were very attentive to take care of the issues, so thank you to that contractor and for your office for following up. That's it.
Okay. We don't need any more, should go to any other person. Okay, great. Highway sanitation committee report, Mr. Rick Reddeman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items. A reminder to the residents, there will be no trash collection on Thursday, November twenty-fifth, or Friday, November twenty-sixth, for the Thanksgiving holiday. Also, our leaf collection program. Also, our leaf collection program continues on schedule. Crews will return to all wards, volume and weather conditions may hold them up a little bit, but we ask our residents to be patient and contact your commissioner or the township if you have any questions, the township office at 610-534-4800, and you should have your commissioner's number if you have any questions, give them a call too. But I think they're moving along very well, and one thing that I think Ridley Township does well is collecting leaves. We wrap around a couple times, hopefully the snow holds off and we're able to do.
Hopefully they all start falling at once.
Yeah, we got, we have to get a big wind and come through.
Catch, calm down. Catch it, you guys, remember the trees?
Yeah, go shake them. That's it.
But we got, it seems like we got the same problem the last five, six years, and it's been later with them.
All along, yeah.
Yeah, but then the snow, it's, they're better than the snow, so, they're early, they go back around.
Oh, yeah, definitely do, but it gets, my point is, it gets harder for the guys to keep going, keep going.
Yeah.
They're picking up leaves and snow, snowplow at the same time.
Put it for double pay. Law and Order Committee Report. So, Shane?
Nothing but excellent.
Recreation Committee Report.
Thanks, Mr. President. Our annual Christmas tree lighting will be on Tuesday, December 7th, rain date, December 14th, on the grounds of the municipal building. There will be a DJ playing holiday music along with light refreshments at 6:30 and the arrival of Santa at 7:00. After the lighting of the tree, Santa will walk around and pose for pictures. There will also be a North Pole mail box where children can drop off their letters to Santa. In the event of inclement weather, check our website and Ridley Township Rep Facebook page for updates. The Recreation Department is also sponsoring the Tools for Tags Collection. Boxes are located in the municipal building, the second floor. New unwrapped toys can be dropped off Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, and also the night of the Christmas tree lighting. The Winter Spring Rec Happenings Newsletter will soon be posted on our website, www.ridleytpd.org, and our Facebook page. Online and in-person registration for our winter spring programs will be in on December 1st. Thank you.
That it?
Yep.
Okay, Public Safety Committee Report. So, I welcome Lois back. Good to see you in the audience tonight, keeping an eye on us. Public Safety Committee Report for the month of October, our police handled 993 calls. The breakdown is as follows, Plumland, 75, Fossum, 263, Holmes, 115, Belmont Park, 38, Warden, 33, Ridley Park, 134, Seating, 75, Srockmore, 51, and Woodland, 209. Okay, I have a couple. Next month, our officers were involved in a vehicle pursuit that stretched through multiple jurisdictions, involving a stolen vehicle and a carjacking. Our officers were instrumental in locating the vehicle and cooperating with the other departments in stopping and apprehending the occupants. Further investigation revealed the occupants were suspects in a Moni State Carjacking Ring, with involvement in multiple incidents throughout the region in Delaware, Maryland, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. Great job. Okay. Officers also issued to Collingdale Police in their pursuit of a vehicle, doing fire shots at a residence in Collingdale. The vehicle was observed on Chester Pike entering a residential neighborhood in the Ridley Township before heading back to Collingdale. Our officers were able to stop the vehicle, so Collingdale could take the occupants into custody without further incident. But just like to get a, a couple things that our guys are involved in, of course, there's, you know, always close to a thousand calls, and the answers, so, another great job, please pass it on. Those, so, Lois, we want to, wanted to send our condolences on your husband.
Thank you.
Ran into, Lois, after one of our meetings in Colonial Village, and she filled me in, so.
Yeah.
So tough, it's very tough to, I thought it was a prayer, but, it's good to see you back out.
Thanks. Good to see you.
Okay, Health and Community Committee Report, Mr. Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of October, we had 223 permits issued, 22 contractors registered, 58 certificates of occupancy issued, 34 rental inspections, and 14 health inspections. That's it, Mr. President.
Okay. Safety Committee, anything?
I have one, I have one.
Library Research Center Committee Report, it's covered.
Thank you, Mr. President. The December Princess Party features Elsa from the Disney movie Frozen on Wednesday, December 8th at 6:00 p.m. at the library. Children three and older are invited on a fun and frosty interactive adventure, Saving Christmas, with storyteller Mr. Don on Wednesday, December 15th at 6:00 p.m. The library will host a blood drive on Wednesday, December 1st, from 2:00 to 6:30 p.m. Visit www.redcrossblood.org to schedule a donation. Upcoming evening activities for adults include Holiday Ornament Paint Party, December 7th, learn how our American Christmas traditions grew out of centuries-old, sometimes drunken, bawdy European celebrations, December 9th, and an evening with author Charles Dickens and his most favorite character Ebenezer Scrooge on December 15th. In October, 4,324 residents visited the library and checked out more than 11,400 books and other items. This brings the use of the library back to pre-pandemic levels.
Nice.
Program attendance was 1,577 in October and is down 11,252 so far this year. The library trustees are running a holiday fun freezing raffle. The prize is $300 in gift cards to area businesses and lottery tickets. Tickets are $1 each for six, for five, and are available at the library. Drawing is December 20th. For more information or to register for programs and activities, visit our website, www.ridleylibrary.org. Thank you.
How do you know we smile, because I remember when we were building that new library, people were saying, well, people don't use a library anymore.
Yeah.
Not with those numbers.
Yeah. That's unbelievable.
You do a great job.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Financial Committee Report, Mr. Nolte.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I am. All commissioners received a list this month's bills. I would like to make a motion for approval, subject to the controller's review and approval.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made, seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All new budgets, anybody have anything?
Just have a nice Thanksgiving, everyone.
I'd like to wish the residents and everyone in the township, Board of Commissioners, a happy Thanksgiving, and congratulations, Shannon. Fossum Fire Company has a Christmas festival December 11th from 11:00 to 5:00.
Well, good.
I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we posted this morning, Rick and myself, on our social media accounts, letting residents know that in the Leadham section tomorrow evening, there's going to be an event for a young girl that lives in the neighborhood, her name is Sammy Kelly. The Kelly family's lived in Leadham, in the Leadham section of Ridley Township for forty or fifty years. Sammy, I've known Sammy's dad for probably 25 years. I talked about this a couple months ago, but Sammy came, has been diagnosed with a disease called San Polipo Syndrome, and it's like Alzheimer's disease for children, so it's a very devastating diagnosis for the family. I talked to Rick several months ago, and along with the fire chief, Tommy Solpat, down in Leadham, we reached out and applied to the Delco group for assistance for the family to try and make, make whatever kind of really good memories that they could for Sammy while she's, while she's still able to, to remember things, with things. They, they reached, reached back and they've accepted Sammy, and they're going to have an event tomorrow night. They're just gonna, some fire trucks, the captain's providing some police cars for it. Not going to make it too loud and overwhelming, because Sammy's a shy girl, and she does get overwhelmed, but Delco group is going to, you know, have some nice little getaways for Sammy and her family, not to get too deep into the details, but we're just asking for people from the neighborhood if they could just come out for 15 minutes, it's going to be from 6, 6 to 6:15 timeframe, should be done by 6:30. Just to give Sammy a wave and a little clap, and just to let the Kelly family know that the Ridley Township community is there to support them through this time, and I appreciate everybody that's already reached out today with this Facebook activity that we had today. It's, the family's very touched and very moved by it, so, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Also, I wanted to congratulate the Ridley High School football team for a great win last Friday. That was one great game. Want to wish them luck this week at Coachville, so, let's go Raiders.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and enjoy your families, and see you in the future. Any other? Thank you.
Thank you.